What we have to do because these are guidelines that are established by the Attorney General, which is the state and the very category. So if they say hey, you have to get body cameras, here's the three kind that you have to get, you have to get it. And if you don't have the money, you have to find it and that's why you have a bond. So it's not really something like back of the gun, right? When they go out with a joke. So those are things that you have to do. So it's not like um.
Right, so please don't get me wrong. I'm not saying I would need that, but I would like to go with the detailed information. How many we have, how many are wearing out and how many desperately we need. So of course, whatever there is a need, we have to provide. I understand that. Thank you.
Right.
Uh can I also request the uh, I know, I know we got this purchase order back in November of two thousand twenty-two. In the amount of twenty-two hundred sixty thousand roughly, right? So this is based on uh the body cam on your description here, right? So but in the purchase order, I don't see a breakdown, uh breakdown of the model, how many? What's the price? It's just got to be a two separate uh.
Yeah, so what you're, what you're saying, what you're saying is the front page of the purchase order?
In the back.
This is probably a backup of this.
Office three, six, five, G one, discovery, and on son of a ball posted emails.
So one is fifty-nine.
Uh no, that's the M S I computer system.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. So there's, there's a whole backup to this. You want to get your copy of?
Yeah, can I get a copy? Well, it says ninety-seven thousand, one invoice and hundred and sixty, roughly about hundred and sixty-two thousand uh nothing voice. Can I get a copy of a detail on that one too? So I should, you know, I could, you know, check the details of the, you know, model, prices and all that.
Once again, with that, the in a couple years ago, they had, the police department had a camera that was also in the car. That would be activated. So that would probably be the reason why there was two. One was the camera in the car that activates when they put the light on. The other one would be the.
The body cam.
Body cam. So.
Okay.
Any more questions? Well, let me just add this. I come back to a circle again, back to my point. I have to emphasize the point. It's not about why we have to do it. It's part about how come we didn't prevent this? Okay, everybody's talking about policies, states, we have to mandate it, we have to update it. So nobody knew about this until last moment? That deserves.
About what?
Cabs, for example. I'm giving you one example, as many examples.
So.
Nobody knows the outdated, it's how old it, we have to start preparing to save money, budget, again. We're coming back to the same problem that we had. We're hoping that we reform. Any more questions? Good. Um. Counsel reports, is anything else in here, anything else that you guys want to talk about, your counsel report?
I have one. Uh regarding our police department clerk record position job, I did send out an email to a mayor.
Yes.
Couple weeks back. Uh I'd like to actually make a motion to post that job on our police, running police website and borough website. So the public can know and then, you know, submit their resume and we could actually interview them. So can I make that motion?
You can make a motion. Do I have a second on the table? On the floor? Second, okay. So do we do a roll call? Let's do a roll call. No, you could, we could. This is a work session that could also be a resolution. We could make it if you want.
So is the roll call, put it on the agenda?
What would you like, put it on the agenda to advertise?
Let's ask Tiffany. In these kind of services, Tiffany, can we do a roll call and you and put it into agenda and say that for the specific position that? Councilman Min was referring that we should open to the public, do an open job posting for that position. Uh so we could, so we could get, you know, a whole range of qualifications as well as prior. Um there was a situation where the applicant um didn't go through proper procedures and background check in and a criminal record. So we.
Okay, so this is the job that was previously posted on in the same manner. I just want to be clear.
It was never posted, but uh but but maybe councilman, after that, you guys. What is, what's that for?
It was posted.
It was posted?
It was posted and the police department, the police department interviewed, interviewed two people.
It was posted?
The one person that they interviewed, when after they interviewed, the police department doesn't check, background check.
That didn't work out. I'll leave that at that.
Yeah, the background check didn't work out. The second one that they interviewed came back and he did pass. Chief Espino sent an email saying that he talked to this person, interviewed this person, and he wanted to hire this person. I, in return, also sent an email to the mayor saying that the chief is requesting that we hire this individual. And we should hire him.
Okay, so what, how, how, how was this notified, can I ask? Was it posted on, on the internet or something or?
I don't know.
And how long, how long, how long was the application process? How long did it take before it goes up?
Well, they didn't have too many people that.
That's how long was it?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know.
That I would like to know.
Our police department website was down for a while.
Yep. It was down.
We recently reassessed the website.
Yeah, I don't know if it's back up again.
Right, we, we got notified by the chief last month.
I got word by hearsay, by, by, you know.
I wanna know when, when was that posted?
There will be a question to this department.
My question then would be, after they interviewed the person, they said they want to hire a person. I said, put it on the agenda and we would hire a person. And then at that time, mayor, you said that you didn't remember anything, any emails from the chief or any emails from me. You forgot.
No, I didn't read it.
Well, I don't think, I mean, what's happening is the police department at this point doesn't have a records card.
We want to get a records card.
But we have one that the police department interviewed and I say that we should hire the one that the police department interviewed and passed. And the police chief is requesting to hire.
Get some information from the police chief, like, like, like the B A said, we want to know how, when.
Well, mayor. My, my, uh, my point of view, right? I was not actually uh notified. Of the applicants or the interview as a part of police committee, right? I should be part of it, right? So having said that, I just made a motion that we put up, you know, job on our police department running website and the borough website. We'll take the application and we'll interview them and we'll, we'll go from there.
Well, the other thing, mayor, when we, when we do people, get people for this position, the police department is the department that interviews them. Not the mayor, not the council, not the police committee. It's the police department.
We have the appropriate authority to decide. That's why we're here.
What I'm saying is, I could.
Can I make a motion then as long as he make a motion, I make a motion that we.
Well, I would even know about motion with great differences.
So, so if my knowledge is correct, if you can help me out. Okay, we're out of words.
I, I'm, equally as lost.
Okay, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to clarify, Floyd.
Yeah.
Can you see my everything? Um so, so the, the question is, at a work session, can a motion be made to allow for a roll call vote by the governing body to authorize the council to go out to post? However, whether it's in the paper, on a website, or through other means, a job description for a specific purpose?
You can certainly do have action at these work session meetings. The only thing that I uh weary of is that I've heard that perhaps the police department or the chief noted that they wanted to hire someone already. So I don't know what the status of that is and perhaps we can table this until we can get the specifics and what happened there. Because I don't want to overstep anyone, anyone else's boundaries if there's something we can process that we're unaware of.
Okay, so to correct, to, to, to clarify that statement, um an individual, without bringing up any names or violating any type of confidentiality. An individual's name was uh put forward to the governing body in the form of a resolution to be hired at this past month's meeting. And that matter was tabled.
Okay.
So he, he was interviewed by the police department, he was selected by the police department and the name of the individual in the form of a resolution was, was brought, but it was tabled.
And it was tabled, okay.
It was tabled, you're right.
Okay, and then just another follow-up for purposes of hiring and things of that nature. All job postings are posted in the same manner that they're discussing now to.
So um I, I, the, no. So uh I don't know what the process would be for this one. And I guess that would have to be something to be established here tonight.
That's why I'm saying maybe.
Tabled, I, I think that's correct. I think that would be.
Some, some government jobs posted on one website, other websites, like I emptied in other sorts of similar websites. Pick those up and put them on their website. So I don't wanna speak one way or the other as to whether we should do this or not. Perhaps we need more information before we can.
I understand.
Everyone an educated opinion.
Yeah.
So council, council, so I would like to get some information from the police department, uh B A for the sudden relay. For all the questions that we asked for, when was it posted, how was it posted, how long was it posted? Uh having applicants, having who interviewed them, obviously, uh I don't wanna be very partial. It gotta be equal representation. And you know, I think the, the governing body should get involved because we're all appropriate authorities. And you stated that you didn't get any emails as well. So let's just table it. You table it though. Next, we will get the information when we request it now and we'll make a, we'll make a decision later.
I'll make a motion to table.
Hi, head.
You have a second? Roll call?
Okay, so table the matter of advertising for the position of the circuit's clerk, Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yeah.
Min?
Yes.
Par?
Yes.
Vity?
Yes.
Great.
Anything else you guys want to talk about?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please go ahead.
It's been brought to my attention that in uh, I guess when we, the mayor and council decided to bring forth that the promotions of the chief and the captain were invalid or weren't, weren't made correctly when they were made. So we brought them to court. And when we got to court, the judge made a ruling. Now, from a couple of police officers that came with me and from another anonymous letter that was put in my mailbox that the, there was one promotion, I won't say because I'm not embarrassing anybody, that they had two votes. And uh affirmative votes. And our ordinance says three. Now, I feel that we bring this.
Three, sorry, three, sir.
Two. It was two votes.
No, 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 you need more than three votes to get that passed. We're getting this going.
It was two votes.
You can't have two votes.
That's not what you're saying.
Okay.
Good.
So I feel that we, mayor and council, should bring this to court like we brought the others to court. Of course, we can't be benefiting one side and not the other side and let a judge decide that.
Okay, uh I have to just add on to that. I'm personally baffled by what just happened concerning the court case that we settled. Um the fact that, the fact that at the end of the day, something that was wrong became, you know, it just, for me, it just, it was a lot. It was, for me, it was personally a, a, a lot of grief, a lot, a lot of, uh, you know, like, uh, you know, issues that, you know, we don't have to create. Because at the end of the day, it seems like we're just spending taxpayers' money.
Well, we won't go into how we're spending tax money because I have other opinions on how we spend tax base money.
Well, anyways, well, then we'll uh, okay, let's, let's go ahead.
Whenever we have this kind of uh issues and matters, I really personally would like to stop. Please, you know, I got so many lawsuits against myself and this is really too much. If we, let's all put our hands on our hearts and think about it. We are going after everyone. Going against, please, we can stop suing people. We can stop. Cause we did here and there already too much. It's not your money. It's not my money. It's people's money.
We're not going after the individual. We're going after the process, the way.
And then we went through the process and you put them back, right? So please, you know, and okay, but what I wanted to say, so whenever we have this kind of a good idea, let's put on the vote. So that's why we are here. We would like to make all our matters in a appropriate way. So I don't have to raise my voice. I'm so sorry. So you know, whatever the issues we have, we could all peacefully go, you know, to the vote. So each one of us feel that this is good thing or this is not good thing and I don't wanna, you know, waste people's money anymore. I don't wanna, personally, I got so many, you know, lawsuit against me. So I know how it feels. This is ridiculous.
It's not against the individual. Get that straight. I'm not going, saying anything about the individual.
Okay, that's true.
We went through this with the past one. And we were going for the way it worked out. It worked out that they were wrong the way they did. Now, coming back to the same thing right now where we went there. So what do we do? Close our eyes to this one?
Okay, so if you really wanted that, I wanna add that into your, you know, making sure that we're very, you know, very, very straight. I asked to get an interview here concerning the applications and you guys say you don't need an, you don't, you don't need an interview. You, you think.
What are you talking about?
Interviews, interviews for the positions.
What positions?
Positions, the two positions that are supposed to be rectified. And you guys, you guys decided to make a vote and bring them back to them again.
We did the vote. That's best. That's best practice. We're done. We did that.
So. I think, I think we should.
Yeah.
Let's, let's just put on the uh.
Yeah, this is, it's just, if you guys want to talk about this, let's hold. Yeah, this is.
Bring it up. This is a work session.
Yeah, you can talk about it, but certain things that I'm kinda like.
Bring anybody to you.
Tiffany, can we talk about this right now? You know, work session?
What, you wanna talk about a, what's recent?
Yeah, well, I, I guess, I guess you're not. But you know what? This is why we have a work session. But yeah, that's why we're just talking, just going on. Anybody else? It's okay, Tiffany. You don't know the background. Go ahead.
Oh, I would like to put uh one decision on the agenda.
Speak up a little bit.
Speak, use your mic. Yeah, thank you.
This one is not working. Okay, uh for our pool, I would like to uh bring up the idea of putting credit card machine that we don't have currently. Cause uh we've been getting uh cash only for the additional person to come to the pool. And it's been uh raised many times in the past that we like to place the credit card machine. So whoever doesn't always bring the cash around, they could still come to the pool and enjoy themselves. And also more and more people are using uh credit card or debit card. So instead of bring the cash around, I believe, uh you know, that will also set up uh much faster and better accounting system as well. So uh I would like to put that into one agenda. Uh I think this year is kinda too late, but you know, if we plan it for the next year.
Okay, uh I, I, there's a motion on the table to like to put it in agenda, Tiffany, uh to put in a credit card deposit system for the swimming pool. For next year, for next year.
Yes, it's already too late for this uh.
Um there's a motion right now. Can I have a, did you please require you to sign your turn yet? Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please? I mean, the, the, the.
How do you make a roll call?
Yeah, no, no, no. This is right now, Tiffany, do you, let me ask you a question. Do you want to do this uh as a, as a resolution? You can do that right now or as a work session? Or you want us to think about it?
I thought a work session.
You could do it too.
Oh, okay, then I would like to put it on to the agenda because we have enough time.
Good, good.
To plan and do it.
So, so you wanna put it into the now? Do I have a second? Do I have a second on the motion? All right, then let's, Tiffany, can I vote now?
You can hold on whenever, you know, Tiffany was seconded, like I heard.
Yeah, all right, let's go.
What do you think?
Put up, put up, put a credit card transactional system for the pool for next year.
I got that. But what are we voting for? To put it on the agenda?
No, no, voting it now, right?
For the, for the.
For resolution.
Resolution. Yes, you could.
No.
That's what she's saying.
I mean, you can't, uh the res- resolution dies at the end of the year and you're, if you're voting for it, right?
Ah.
Okay, you might as well bring it up for discussion again next year before the start of.
Let me try to explain something here. So I think it's a good idea. We've done it in the past. I like it. So I, I think you should note it like you just did. And what you guys should consider doing is when the new year comes, cause if you pass the resolution now, even for next year, at twelve thirty-one, it's gonna die. You can do it again.
Okay.
So I think when we're doing the budget next year for the pool, one of the things is whoever the manager is, that you can say, okay, fine, as far as the, we wanna have a, a credit card machine. Whoever the service provider is going to be. And do it as part of the budget of the pool. And if you have to do a resolution, like you'll know, like in March, when you do all the resolutions for the pool, opening and closing it. Opening the pool, closing the pool, chemical purchases, all the other stuff. And when do they have to be for?
Sure.
Credit card.
Makes sense.
Credit cards.
And for me, so B A, because uh you know, I also learned about budgeting for the town. And I went to the class and then they said all the departments uh supposed to be handing in their current year uh transactions. And according to that, for the future year, uh sometime in October and November. That's what I heard.
That's what you said.
Yes, so I would like to put this idea on so for any department to plan for the next year ahead in October or November. So you know, for, for them to notify.
That's right. But you can do a resolution.
Resolution in the January.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um just before, before, because I have a question. Do you think you learned that they need the premise to submit a report of?
Oh, yes, yes.
What kind of report again is that?
Uh for the budget. So you know, they have.
To prepare for, oh, to prepare for.
Prepare to.
Ten months transactions and plus, you know, their next year's plan and the money, how much they will be needing.
Around October, they should submit it.
Yeah, so October and November, they'll already have to submit it. And um you know, mayor and the uh the financial committee, they'll have to look through it. And they can even meet with the old department heads in advance. So nobody needs to wait until the next year come around.
Thank you.
You know, October, November is a good time to start.
So just for clarification, what we do is at the end of October and the first week of November, starts with all budget transfers. Since the state allows budget transfers. So at that point, the CFO, myself, and most of the department heads meet and say, okay, fine, here's where we're closing out the year. This is what we need to get to the end of the year.
Right.
See where you're running short.
Right.
Hopefully not, but they are sometimes. And then we start to work on appropriations, which is to increase or adjust that budget. Which then we go use to go forward when we start establishing the budget in January.
Right, that's what I'm sorry.
You guys don't like what you want, what you want to do.
It's a great idea. I think the B A agrees. I would like to also, you guys wanna consider a little bigger picture? I think that our whole system concerning accepting uh uh monetary value was outdated, I think, concerning the ticket or the tax office. You wanna really consider what other towns are doing, if they are doing it, if they're successful. We should really consider doing that as well.
Yeah, maybe that was a standard menu, so.
Good, good. Counsel man.
This is off the, you know, off topic from the swimming pool, right? Regarding the budget, right? So we're doing a twice uh budget every year, right? So re- uh reference to the bond that we just talked about earlier.
Appropriations.
Can we do buzzing?
I, I don't, don't understand.
What do you mean?
Cause we're actually trying to, you know, get this bond too, right?
That's bond. Just not do a budget, a budget.
Bond, bond is not, bond is not, I shouldn't say it's not part of budgeting, it is, but it's not.
Well, it is, it will become a budget.
Yeah.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
I, I don't know. Maybe I didn't hear, but I'm making my. Yeah. About this incident that Stephanie started talking, I don't know, I lost my uh way or talking. But I'd like to get a legal opinion from our, our council.
What kind of legal opinion?
On if we should continue forward on this.
I thought you already spoke with our council.
When did I speak with my, with the council?
I saw you and another councilwoman talking about that, you know? You even talked to any of our borough attorneys about that letter? No? No? Okay, I'll figure that out for you.
No, you don't have to figure that out. But I'd like to ask for a legal opinion.
Okay, well, you wanna open this, I don't think it's a good venue, Tiffany, to open up a, open up a, open up a, you know, like a, like a undisclosed address soliciting email that is eventually saying that we're doing wrong.
I also had two police officers come through and say that it was illegal.
Without, without referencing the letter, Mike, without referencing the individual, I think you could ask a generic question. Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong, as to uh the validity and status of a vote.
I have a memo from my colleagues regarding that.
Talk about the, just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
You're the, the most, is it the most recent order decision from Judge Barrington?
No, it's a follow-up subsequent to that with regard to another officer.
Okay.
Yeah, uh but, but the clerk has just instructed me that there is a memo for your. It's, oh yeah.
Which I will.
Memo about?
The Mike Collin left.
Yeah, I, I.
Mike Collin left?
No, he's on the.
No, he's, he's away. He'll be home.
Oh, yeah, he's in California, drinking that, that wine, I heard. Yeah, yeah.
I, I have a memo regarding the.
Maybe in the script.
Yes.
Let's distribute that. You know what? That's, we could have like another post meeting if you would like, or even we discuss finalizing next Monday. Yes, please, go ahead.
Discussion of the bond ordinance. Um I have to recheck if we did it or not. Every time we adopt a bond ordinance, we also have to amend the capital budget, which is sent over to us from the borough auditor. I don't know if we.
This was in the era?
Amended the capital budget at the time of introduction. If it wasn't, if we didn't do it at the July meeting, we have to.
Again.
Yeah, uh we have to uh adopt that amendment of capital budget resolution when.
So that could be on the agenda for next week.
Right.
You mean for the second reading?
No. So, so when, when you place a bond, you, you float a bond, you add a bond, the, the, to the subject, where it goes into the budget, the, that has to be modified into your budget, right? So that requires a resolution showing that, hey, we put a bond out here and we're gonna modify our bonds. This Stephanie's point, how many bonds we got, so you know, some get retired every year, but submit. So there's a resolution that will be needed saying such that. We're modifying our, our capital portion of the right line item. And here's a resolution that takes care of that. So if that had not been done by the auditor, we gotta do it and it will be on the agenda for this month. So, so that may be work session ready for the agenda, right?
So uh let me check if it was on the agenda last month. I don't think it was. Right, but if it, if it was not there, I will, I will inform you and then we will have to have a resolution from the borough auditor.
Got it, got it. Before we even go.
Before um at the time of.
Yeah, yeah, introduction.
Uh at the time of adoption.
Adoption. So Tiffany, is that, do we have to do a first and a secondary all over again? We don't have to. Okay, good. All right, good.
So I will, I will.
Good. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh in my hand, I have one paper which shows uh purchase order number.
Yes.
And according to that paper, uh it is the total amount is two hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, this is just a statement or your invoice or what we bought, what we purchased. I don't know. Right.
So right now, it seems like we have six pages that are kinda all over the place.
No, 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 no. Okay, the first, first two M S I technologies, two page mall, one with the full page and one with the half. That's the computer.
Thousand.
Yeah, the server uh call. And then the, the single page with the, with the uh number on the top, right in corner, two eleven sixty, two eleven six five three.
Sorry to interrupt. This is the same problem.
Yeah, it's, right.
Did we know what we purchased?
Yeah, the thing is, it can't be just an invoice thing that here it is.
Yeah.
Here it is, guys. We actually need to have a breakdown, knowledge it is, what it is, what model, all that stuff. We're going back, so we're gonna get that information first.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And another one.
Yes, sir.
Uh from, uh by the email come in and out by mayor and B A, that we talked, we talked a lot of message concerned about fine per five thousand per day violation of the fire code. What was it and what's solved or what can be solved or what's the? What was it and what's solved, or what can be solved, or what's the, what's going on? I'd like to know.
Um.
Well, we got Mr. Valente here and just briefly on your plate.
What's the reality?
Uh, I'll be answered to, let me, uh, please go ahead. I guess, I guess I was hoping that we could spend a little more time in your place, but batter up, Mr. Valente.
Who's first? So.
Hold up, Mike, close, close the person.
We, we're right now is.
Okay.
Uh, in September of last year, fire inspection was done of the building. There were numerous fire codes violations that were pointed out and written up for. Uh, I think there were forty-six different violations. Um, as of last Tuesday, only four of the violations were evaded, added to forty-six. In the interim, the state has come in and taken over this case, and now they are looking for compliance.
In other words, everything is okay now?
No.
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 That's it?
That's where we're at right now, yeah.
So we got a citation?
Not yet. Not yet. Yeah.
Who, who gives a citation?
At this point, it would be the state.
Who's the state?
The state.
Who's his name?
Jose Rodriguez.
Jose Rodriguez, he is from where?
He is from the Division of Fire Safety.
Bureau of Fire Code Enforcement, is that correct?
That's his division within its, yeah.
Right, right. There's safeties and stuff like that. He is not from local assistance, because his name is mentioned in registered.
Uh, I think he does local assistance also. I believe he does.
He does both. His name was not mentioned on the fire, uh, prevention, uh, fire code enforcement, but his name was mentioned in the local assistance.
Okay. So just explain to the governing body, Mike, how it works with the violation. So, so I think, I think the confusion was on parts of the council representative mayor. Is that they were looking for a violation specifically from the state, and that's not how it works. So explain to them how it works.
The way it works is, the vi- the notice of violations in order to correct come locally from us. We did the inspection, we wrote up the notice of violation and ordered to correct. When, when we didn't get compliance, then state comes in after that, and they wanna take it all.
Is that happened in two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah. So the, the initial inspection was in two thousand twenty-two, September.
October.
September twenty-third.
When we have to wait the, uh.
Uh, the, uh, the, the inspection was October.
Yeah, September twenty-third.
Okay, so what happened last year, when, when they got, how did they come in? Could you explain who would report to the state that we have an issue, first of all?
The state, quote.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mike, I explained.
So as far as you're talking about like recently?
Like for example, last year, this, this rewind our back, because there's two similar cases that happened right now.
Back to September.
And not only that, it's the same old problem that we didn't rectify yet.
Yeah.
Now, why don't you please tell me what happened in the procedure last year in the state? The fire, uh, prevention bureau and code enforcement came to you, correct?
No, no, last year it was not the state. You're mixing it up.
Yeah.
So, so the way it works is annually, every building, including the borough building, gets inspected, okay? Mike Valente, Chief, Chief Valente inspected this building for code compliance issues. Uh, he came up with the report which was issued on nine twenty-three. And in that report were forty.
Six.
Six. Six items, some of which are simple things and easy fixes, like an open outlet, move an extension cord, replace batteries, recharge fireworks, they're all done. The bigger issues, which we couldn't do here, um, without the governing body making a decision, are things like egress, fire suppression systems. Um, continue to go, Mike. What else was, was in there that would make, maybe things with egress and fire suppression, right?
The, the big ones is. Yeah, all fire protections.
From the fire, from the fire or the building?
Both.
Both?
Oh, but they, but they once, they go together, so they're fired. So those items were put into the cost back in October, and given to Ben, Mayor Chung, and everybody to be addressed. They were never addressed or incorporated to.
You have a record on that, and you did tell them that we have to address it?
Yeah, all emails, you're on.
Now, is that like, how, when was that?
October, November.
Okay, so I'm checking. Okay, good. So then you, you, you were responsible, notified that we have a situation. And then what happened? You said that it was, it was rectified, right? You said that.
It's not the least fixed we fixed.
But how come the subs, exactly the same violation came from Mike, uh, Valente from last year and the same, same issues?
Why is it the same? So, so why, why is it the same violation? Explain, explain to them why it's the same one?
So, the, the, the violations never went away?
No, no, no.
So if you, if you just go down the line?
Right, go ahead. Was this all addressed, or is this addressed or not? Like, like the words that the BA says. What are you doing here? We're talking about all the, um, all the violations that you made, officer.
They're not addressed.
You just said they were addressed.
The items that we could have addressed, we addressed. Simple.
Okay, okay, the simple things are still there. I checked out two thousand twenty-two.
Well, if you, if you go down the list, there's two re-inspections done, one back in November, and one last week. If, if it hasn't evaded on you, it's still unabated. If there's an A, it's abated.
So right now, you said abated by ten twenty-three, twenty-two, that means that was a date it was abated, it was fixed.
No, that's the date it had to be abated by.
So, okay, so, so right now, uh, eleventh twenty-one, two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three is still un, un, unabated, it's not fixed.
Which item?
Well, I'm going down everything.
Yeah, identify which item.
Okay, let's, let's go with this. Let's go with the electrical, number one that you mentioned, the violation, electrical extension point perimeter. That's easy fix, like Dave Lorenzo said.
It's done.
Everything else is.
Is it done?
It's done.
No. Oh, wait, in the police department, in the police department.
The police department is the only department that actually gained higher due to this, which is simple fire.
I think that is.
So, let me, let me.
Go ahead.
So, uh, from, I, I, I saw the report, right? Uh, there's a, I think there's forty-six line items, uh, the violation, right? How many and which numbers been corrected since, uh?
So there were four of them corrected.
Four. So, any other, uh, violation besides those four, it's not an easy fix?
In my opinion, most of them aren't fixed.
Explain, explain the eight items.
So, we'll just take like a simple one, where everybody thinks like an extension cord is simple, but it's, removing an extension cord is not so simple if you don't have an outlet to plug your computers and everything else into, so.
Why is that not simple?
Because you have to run under.
Yeah, because you have to run under, yeah.
That's not that hard?
Well, I mean, I don't know.
Capital project, running couple of lives, doesn't cost that much money.
Okay, we put it in the budget, no one ever did any of it.
Yeah.
So, any other.
Okay, go on to the rest of this stuff.
So, any other related to the extension port, like power port, right? I mean, I'm sure we're not the only department that probably having that violation.
No, I, I think the bigger ones with, with this building is egress. So the second floor in the basement only has one means of egress. That's not allowed, the state.
Explain more about the basement, what they talk about, police department.
So, yeah, so the basement, there's only one stairwell that comes up from the basement. Right? So, by fire code, you have to have two means of egress. There is a condition in the code where you could have one means of egress, but we don't meet.
We don't meet.
We don't meet that code, right? So we would have to do renovations, or, you know, have to do something to meet that standard, or put a second means of egress.
Uh, suppression system, so.
May I please ask you one question?
Sure.
Okay, uh, when you give us the, uh, the result of like forty-six items, line items, uh, usually I believe the BA has a responsibilities of taking care of that.
I did. I sent it to you guys.
Right, so if we don't answer, I think it's a BA's responsibility, keep on giving us, or if one person, like a prior mayor, didn't do any action about it. He had to let, grab each one of us at least.
I did my job, Stephanie, I sent it to you guys multiple times. Check your emails, that, that. Any items that they're talking about?
You know, I was, I was.
Items that they're talking about?
You know, how many of us, the, the, the email, but then, right?
Items that they're talking about?
Yes.
About the mold situation.
Stephanie, I don't make the decision, you know, you make the decision.
Two years ago, right?
Hold on, sorry, no, 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 okay, you're good.
Right, so at the end of our training, whose job is this to take care of this little thing?
Uh, I'm, I'm, councilman, B G.
Yours. Yours. That's, see, that's, that's not for us to decide, but the enforcing agency.
And, uh, the structure to me is really confusing and strange that you are building to, or you are, uh, pinpointing out all these problems of our town, and you are our town's employee, right?
That's his job.
Yes.
Right? Then you have to go after BA continuously saying that this has to be fixed, no?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then you will have to continuously come after, okay, I'll.
One second, okay, uh, councilman, B G, go ahead.
My question is, I keep saying going here for the BA, because he's the one that's supposed to follow up, but correct me if I'm wrong. If the town does not have a facilities manager, it's the BA's job.
We never had a facilities manager.
But once the town, let me finish, please?
Yes, we could.
We never had?
Yes, we could. Let me finish, please.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, okay, go ahead.
Once the town hires a facilities manager, he takes the ball.
Where is he now?
Not to the BS, facilities manager.
Right.
And we have hired a facilities manager.
Facilities manager?
He's in the hall.
Facilities manager.
He was hired.
You're, you're next.
He had a.
Why?
I think you want to put this.
I think we've made the couple of month ago.
Go now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very difficult, man. It's very difficult.
My, my personal point of view on this matter, right? Whatever happened last year is last year, right? Councilman Kim, I have a question for you. Did you ever receive, uh, the notification regarding this matter?
Yes, Kenny?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it for a couple of, uh, week, a lot of weeks until.
So, we, we.
No, no, it was, it was.
He made it so with those best possibilities to ward and advise the council members to make actions.
So what I wanna say is, the, the earlier this year, right, the new government, with Mayor Paul Kim, has been established with two new councils, uh, starting January, starting March, right? We have to be notified earlier enough to make decision or going forward. So, I mean, we ju- I just found out.
I see.
Yeah. So, so you, so you are, okay, and, and I, and I have an email trail that goes back, but here's the bigger issue. The issue is whether you were notified then or not, which you are. The items that he's talking about, we couldn't correct. Regardless of these, adding outlets or extinguishing, second means of egress, fire suppression system, alarm system, uh, cold water on the second floor, we can't do that. That's where we're going. We're not worried about the outlets, although we should be. The fire extinguishers, we took care of that. It's not the facilities manager's point to go do that. That's not his responsibility. The responsibility lies in the building design because of its age. There's things that need to be done which are significant in cost, okay? If you wanted to put a second means of egress on the second floor, you'd have to open up and remit, remove the office at the end for the staircase. Probably have a million dollars. If you wanted to put a second means of egress into the basement like is required, I don't know how you would do that.
What about other, other buildings that are old over hundred years?
I don't, I don't really know what they do, and I don't talk about it.
Okay, okay. Are you, are you, please?
That's my question. This is kind of a technical question, but, yeah, Mike, is that the, uh, two stairways required? Is it mandatory, or when the building is newly built, or modified, or totally renovated?
So, most of, mo-.
When it's, when it's applied.
I can explain it. Mo- most of the code is at the time of the building was built. Okay, but in New Jersey, in the uniform fire code, there is a retrofit section. And the retrofit section doesn't, if, if there's violations, which those ones are, in the retrofit section, it doesn't matter when the building was built, it has to be brought up to current code.
What was that name again? Retro?
Retrofit.
And when was that affected?
Twenty years ago, maybe.
So twen- for twenty years ago, uh, has anybody else raised this question that we have egress?
Twenty years, we haven't done anything for that.
Twenty years, we didn't do anything.
Twenty years, no one ever violated, we never got noticed, I never received.
Well, who, who, let me ask you a question. Let's, let's go back a little bit. Did you, did you mean, you wanna go, go ahead.
So, so, Mike, based on that retrofit, uh, the law or regulation, right, so you're saying that our building has not been grandfathered due to that regulation?
Correct, yes.
And why is that, Mike? Because it's a public building?
No, it's any building. Retrofit code applies to any, any building.
Yeah, but there's conditions to retrocode, isn't there? You know, so you have to apply because it's, it's an imminent danger. Are we in imminent danger for twenty years?
No. Not in a minute hazard. If we were in a minute hazard, we'd back to this building, nobody would realize that.
You'd back to the law, yeah.
Okay, so this building is nineteen sixty-two. I, I checked that out myself. Nineteen sixty-two. Um, since then, not once from the state or from our own fire department came knocking on the door that they're gonna charge us five thousand dollars a day. Who's charging, let's get back to the day that you met with, with, uh, Jose Rodriguez, who allegedly is from the, where is it? It's from the, what is it?
Local assistance?
Yeah, local assistance, but you're saying that's from the fire code enforcement. Now, what is a procedure? Well, if somehow, let's just say he got notified by somebody, all right, because he's not doing nothing here for nothing. He comes here and what happened? Because we weren't here. You were there with Hunter. Dave Lorenzo, you, you were there.
And he, and Paul, Paul saw.
Okay, so, so what happened over there?
So he, he actually contacted me, uh, a couple of days before.
How, how did he contact him? I go through, let's go back and just explain to him the whole situation.
I got, I got a phone call from them. So they, they contacted me a couple of days before.
Why? Because he got a phone call from somebody else that come report?
Complaint.
Complaint?
And who was the complaint from? You said there was a name on the complaint?
It's okay, we'll talk about the.
This, this name on, I don't.
Let's talk about the legal, yeah, good, good.
Is that available information?
Yes, it is. You know, he's asked for it, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I can get your copy of the complaint if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know what? Get a copy of the complaint, sure, right? Make your chance for the.
So go ahead. Let's just say he got the complaint, now you're saying that this is fiduciary duty, is duty to calm down in a town, and we have our own fire department, go ahead.
That's, that's what they do. They oversee us, so.
They oversee, but they don't have the right to give us any fines, correct?
They do. They do. They, they oversee us, so they have the right to go through all of our records.
Tell me, if you don't comply right now to these, uh, twenty-year-old issues, that they're, that not you, but the state's giving us a ticket.
It's been already a week now.
Yeah, last Tuesday. It'll be a week tomorrow.
So they're gonna come out in, in a week.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. Uh, you, you, you're the professional here, so let me ask you a question. I did some research, and I found out that.
Can we have a meeting with him?
I could, I could try.
Can you arrange one?
Yeah, we should definitely have a meeting. We should definitely have a meeting with that. But I found out that, uh, that the state, correct me if I'm wrong, sadly learned, our new mayor, that, that it's actually the fire bureau prevention enforcement that comes, not the local assistance. And, um, the local assistance is not fine. And I saw his name on the local assistance, but not on the Bureau of Fire Code Enforcement. Uh, and the only fire enforcement is coming from our own fire department because of our own, we have our own system, we have our own fire, uh, fi- fire department. And that's because the bureau, uh, because I saw a list here, it says Bureau of Fire Code Enforcement, and in the North Region, our name is not here because we don't get enforced. Because we have our own fire department. Is that correct or not?
Hmm, I'm, I'm kinda losing you a little bit.
Okay, I went to the state fire enforcement website.
So I think, I think what you're saying, there are towns that are enforced by the division. If they don't have their own bureau of fire prevention.
You don't have a fire prevention.
We do, we do.
But why is he coming down around us?
Because we didn't get compliance. So they order us constantly.
Okay, so.
So if, ultimately, although we work for the borough, we answer to the state.
So you, I.
So we're licensed by the state, we have.
Of course, of course, but you're saying that the state again is gonna find us, not, not the fire, not you, not our own fire department?
Yeah, according to what he said, that's what.
Okay. What happened in the beginning at two thousand twenty-two? Who ca- who came with the, who came for inspection? You, why did you, uh, do an inspection in two thousand twenty-two?
Under complaint, really.
Uh, complaint?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you handled it, and then state didn't know what you're saying, but now the state knows?
Yeah.
Something exactly.
No, it was the last state.
Well, let's, you know what? Um, this is thing that I don't understand right now, because I, I got a lot of email from the, uh, the employees here, particularly the Borough Minister here, that stated.
Oh, and to talk about the fines, Mike, when we met with him, he's, and I said to him, okay, well, we'll never have this done in two weeks. And he says, well, there's certain things you can't have done in two weeks, right? Egress, obviously, that's not gonna get done. So, his issue there was to come up in two weeks with, to tell him a plan of what you're gonna do. Knowing that's not gonna be done in two weeks, we have to give him some sort, I'm sorry, I'm back to you again, some sort of plan as to how you can address these structural issues in the building. And at that point, it's okay. And if that doesn't happen, and I told him a whole bit, we're in the midst of moving out, this, that, the other thing, going to the trailers, if you watch fine, that solves the problem. Trailers, new building, whatever it is, may make. But I understand, I don't wanna come back in two weeks. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, at any time. I don't wanna come back in two weeks and hear the same story again, that we're working on and we're not gonna get this, or there's no decision.
Of course, of course, I think, I, go ahead.
So, I said to him, and what type of fines are we looking at? Five thousand, ten thousand? He says, at a minimum, five thousand dollars, but we can go to. So, the state, offline structure is very different than the state's fine structure.
That's.
So, where, where five thousand may be a maximum for us, that may be a minimum for them. I don't really know their fine structure or how that works.
In other words, if we don't, if we don't, uh, build this building again, we got the, we, we gotta go bankrupt? Our town should go bankrupt?
I mean, I, I don't.
Five thousand a day?
I'll be honest with you, Councilman, I, I saw, I saw what we need to fix. The lines, the lights. Second means of egress, we have to talk to this thing official, because we just discovered, council discovered. Council just discovered.
Fire code, but it's a building code.
Council just discovered fire, fire official, that retrofit must be done, so we gotta really talk with it, it's true, like, oh, for council.
I, I don't, I don't think he's being very unreasonable. He just.
He wants somebody to talk to him and give him an answer.
Yeah, he's just looking for.
Okay, but you gotta see the emails that I've been getting from you guys, okay? From, 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 from the B day, okay? It says that. Fire State Marshal Jose Rodriguez came to inspect, and it was not good. The fire marshal has ordered that the violations be immediately addressed in two weeks.
He did do that.
What you guys just said was, you know, like, immediately, you guys are screwed.
Address it means, tell me what.
If they are not, fines will be levied in about a five thousand. So, right now, we're times taking right, right?
He's looking for us to come to the lines, that's all he's doing, so.
So, here, I think, I think we should do this, uh, you know, we got about a week until the, you know, the guy is gonna come out, right?
No, no, I think we call him before that.
Yeah, 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 so, why don't we set up a meeting, right? I, I know we have to tell, you know, whatever the situation. It's been, since last year, it's been almost a year now with this situation, right? Right? So, September, August. So, back then, uh, you know, Mike inspected, but this time around, state came. So, why don't we give them, you know, what the situation with our building is right now, and then why don't we ask for extension? Maybe?
Yeah, that's the thing that I asked you guys for the extension, which, as you know, you gave your report, you gave me the fines, but then you always say, hey, you want, you want to remedy this for a certain amount of time. We didn't get that from the state yet.
No, well, last year.
We just had a verbal communication from you guys, and we didn't hear anything from the state, so we should, need to say ASAP.
Yeah, we could, I can, I can call him and try and set up a meeting.
Even, even this one, even this week, uh, with fifty, what's a good time for you guys?
You have forty-five more minutes, and then we have.
Five, five o'clock, six o'clock, what time is a good time for you guys?
Yeah, he's not gonna come out at night, I don't think.
All right, so.
I'll be here.
I'll be here during lunchtime if I have to be. How about, I'll look at your council, because I think it's a report.
As soon as, as soon as he's available, whoever shows up, shows up.
I'll call him in the morning.
He's gonna ask, he's gonna ask, he's gonna ask ASAP. ASAP. ASAP.
I'll, I'll, I'll call him person in the morning now, oh.
All right, good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Good. May I, uh, may I close this sub portion of the meeting and vote on public participation? Now a motion? Grab a second? What? It was not on the agenda right now, so you wanna give me the information before this happens, really before this happens? Was it part of the resolution? How come it's not?
No, it's not a resolution.
Okay, so you wanna talk about it?
It's an item of discussion.
Yeah, so that was, that was, that was.
Please.
Come back into, um, the litigation that's coming out of the lawsuit that's being filed against the borough for non-compliance with its fair share of housing obligation. We hired an attorney for that, Robert Simon.
Which, which, uh. We're talking about the two hundred or the four hundred?
Oh, I don't know. No, fifteen grand, yes.
Fifteen grand, two hundred.
So, we hired Robert Simon. So, he then said, okay, fine, I need to look at your master plan and start going through this stuff.
We then put on. We need to hire Simon. Do you have a resolution? Please provide a resolution.
And then, and then, so he said, then I need a planner. Who's your planner? I need somebody to work with me to defend the borough's position. Now, we have our, our, uh, council from, uh, the planning board involved, council from, co-involved, and we got a proposal from the recommendation on Robert Simon, who was, I don't remember the guy's name, the planner, we put him on the agenda, and then we pulled it off. So, he's saying, hey, I gotta look back into court and talk to the judge, I need somebody with me to start working on this. We need to either, um, hire a planner or figure out how you're gonna defend.
We have a planner, role planner, Jill Harmon, you're saying that we also need a special.
Yeah, yeah.
Attorney that handles builders remedy, correct?
Yes. More, yes, yeah.
And the reason why, the reason why we're doing that is because we need to, uh, exact.
Yeah, so, so we're being challenged, we're being challenged on what's called a builder's remedy, which is saying the building, the town has. Has met the compliance. And the attorney who's going to fight and defend us is gonna say, we need to look at your old master plan and say, these are, this is what we have in this zone here, and what you're trying to propose is wrong, and the planner needs to spell out and defend the borough and along with the borough, that attorney, not the borough attorney, that attorney as to a defense, in, in this case. He needs an expert to work with him. We haven't done that yet, he keeps asking for it.
Well, let's do this, let's start meeting with Jill Harmon first, cause I sent you the email. She's here for the council members' vision and views of what our future plans are. She has to understand what we want, so.
This is not for.
No, 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 the master.
This is not for the master plan.
Uh, but.
You're mixing them up. This is specifically for, no, the master plan is push, push aside a second.
Isn't there a relationship, there's a relationship between the master plan and the builder's remedy, no?
Yes, the.
What are they?
The builder's remedy lawsuit is based on your existing master, existing master plan, not the proposed Jill master plan that she wants to do. That's, push that to the side. This is basically saying, this is what you have at, on Grand Avenue, for lack of a better term. Based on this master plan, we hired this attorney to come in and represent that, and he's saying, I need a planner to work with me on why that's okay, and we're not gonna get three hundred units jammed out on a losing board.
Well, I.
Jill has nothing to do with it.
I think right now we're beyond that, is not, I think that.
We're, we're getting ready to go to court.
The, the, you mean the fif- the two hundred fifteen grand?
When was the last time we had the master plan updated?
The master plan is passing its updated life. Uh, we tried to start it last year, we tried to start it this year, we've never got off the ground with it. Um, it was in spirit ready last year as well. Um, so, yeah, it needs to be updated.
When, when, when was this lawsuit?
On the.
Remedy, uh.
I don't remember about that.
I heard, I heard that they, they.
There's two, there's two lawsuits.
There's two for the same, same, same.
One's been dismissed?
One that was dismissed because as going to the zoning board.
Right.
Like, with the planning board, it's a different game ballgame.
That's.
For builder's remedy.
Right.
No?
One have to pay fifteen grand while two lawsuits.
Okay, please, put that in, uh, email or.
Yeah, let's talk about that later.
Yeah, we have that. We're gonna have to buy it.
The thing is, whether we have our, uh, let's have a closed session.
Here's what it comes down to. Do you wanna hire a planner to help this guy or not? Or you wanna just let the lawsuit go?
No, we want, we, we wanna hire the planner, but the reason why I stopped is because out of the blue, after two months saying that we need to do this, popped out like two, three days ago saying that we need to do this now.
With the recommendation.
Yeah, regulatory attorney, but the mayor or the council said no idea was. We didn't even know about the first lawsuit.
Well.
Yeah. With the first lawsuit?
That copies of all. Oh, that copies of all.
The first lawsuit that they dropped.
Yes.
From you.
And you got the dismissal as well.
Then it's my mistake, you tell me about.
Dismissal as well.
Yeah, dismissal, I knew they did, they, they take it up. But the mayor, council, oh, really? That's not notified.
Anything to be discussed, let us know first, okay?
You have to notice, but here, here's what it comes down to. I don't care what you guys know. If you don't wanna defend the lawsuit, don't defend the lawsuit, let it go to the two hundred units. If you don't help Robert Simon, he's the attorney who.
I've heard that there's nothing you could do right now.
There is a lot you can do.
No, we have to get representation, absolutely.
Well, you have representation. You gotta give this guy who he needs, or not, to work with. If not, he's gonna go into court.
You're getting confused right now.
No, I'm not confused, you're confused.
Cause, cause the, the law fruit that you said, right?
Robert Simon.
Two months ago.
Robert Simon, yeah.
I've noticed through your emails that he, you should hire this guy for something else, that's not it?
Robert Simon was hired by you guys.
You know what? It's okay, let's have a closed meeting before, before.
We got into this quick. Robert Simon was hired by you guys to defend fifteen grand.
That's next.
Along with, along with Diane, that's the, the right, and Albert, well, who is our co, sorry. They need a planner.
I spoke with Albert, I just spoke with Albert.
They need, they need a planner to work with them.
I think it's better than you, you know, we make mistakes. So, if you keep just saying, you know what, we're not saying you should do or not, just give us a no BS, current situation or closed session before we start.
Let me know, but we gotta do it. Or not, or don't, don't do it, other hand.
So, Tiffany, we would like to, uh, put a closed session to discuss this, uh, Monday.
Fine, I, I, I'm gonna speak with that, to my office about this matter. I know that Mr. Simon, the briefs in this matter, I think the briefing signal starts in November, so they need to act quickly to obtain experts to defend this matter upon Simon. I've just related the information that I was given and what I'm actually looking at.
I've heard his email saying that I for one would like to do that, I gotta, but, but, I'm always talking about the proper procedures. The proper procedure was, I got confused, or whatever the email or we didn't get, the fact that two months ago, three months ago, when, when the video was talking about this attorney, the special attorney for, for the builder's remedy, and then he came back, uh, like two, three, you know, a week ago, he was saying that we need to do this now, now, now. I thought they're two different entities.
No, same thing.
So, why you, why did you ask me to hire this guy? Let's put him in the resolution. You just said that he was hired.
The attorney was hired, well, you hired him. The, the planner, we need a planner, it's not.
Not Jill Harmon?
No.
I said.
And you got the information, planner is not a attorney? It's two separate people.
Planner is a attorney. Okay, good. So, so you're saying that right now, that we, we never.
We wanna hire a planner. We never hired him, it was on the agenda, you pulled it off. All we need to do is.
I pulled it off for a reason.
And that's fine, whatever the reason is, all we need to do is put on the agenda to hire the planner, to give the attorney somebody to work with, to get us hopefully at a builder's remedy.
Sounds good. So, so we'll, we'll discuss that, uh, Monday on a, on executive session, the information.
Is that, is that.
Yes, please.
Okay, it doesn't matter, they both have the information.
Let's start in the start beginning, if that's okay with you guys. Let's start from, start just on this.
Start at six.
You start at six.
And then we go to.
Yeah, we're gonna have executive, uh, uh, session on this specifically. Could you please prepare all the documentation so we'll be up to date? Thank you.
So, you're gonna have a closed session?
Yes.
Yes. Monday, Monday. Good. Anybody else? All right, great.
Guys, fifteen grand, fifteen grand, still with everybody lost.
It's okay, it's okay. Council reports? Anybody?
We did that.
Council reports and that, oh.
Yeah.
We did the, oh, we did, we did, okay, we did, okay, thank you for that. All right, may I close this session and open to the public, we have a motion?
I'm in.
Grab a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Please. Please go ahead. Um, you know what? I don't know why this is not here, always, but. It's okay, it's okay, we can talk there, but we should set this up.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to things we discussed earlier.
Yes.
And yes, please hire somebody for the affordable housing, the builder's remedy, it's important to us. Um, with regard to the police department, how long has the police department been without a records clerk?
Oh, I cannot ask that question, cause our chief's not there.
About eight months.
About eight months.
Eight months.
So, the last records clerk was, um, a young lady, and she moved in Pittsburgh, so, Pittsburgh.
Okay. So, someone has, someone in the police department has to be doing that work. Who is doing that?
Taking a special off the road, putting them on the desk.
So, we're taking an active officer?
Yes.
Doing that, okay. From coming to the meetings, what I've heard is, I think there was someone temporarily there or something? I don't know, it wasn't. Okay, special. Um, that they did advertise and that there wasn't an overwhelming response, and that, from what I'm gathering, and just let me say, I don't work for the town, I don't work for the town, they volunteer work, they said, nobody, my family works for the town, so. But apparently, they interviewed someone, um, they're gonna work in the police department. Whatever department you work in, whether it's in the municipality or a private business, the person you're gonna work for and with is usually who interviews you. All right, I understand here you have a police committee, but I don't think the committee, except for Councilman Beatry, knows exactly what's required. So, if someone was interviewed that was a positive client, and I don't know why you're smiling unless you have something against the person and have somebody else in mind, why, what's so funny?
I have every right to smile, please continue, I was bothering you, was I? Go ahead.
Um, this manager writes a book on that. I think you wanna hire someone, and if it's the person that the chief wants, get another officer back on the street and hire this person. We're going through stuff. Apparently, you did get the email, and you chose not to read it, so it sounds like you're stalling on.
You're correct.
Okay, well, you said you got it, you got it, you didn't read it, you didn't read it. So, hopefully, you're reading all the emails you get. That's one thing. The other thing is, with regard to credit cards for the pool, that may or may not be good. I think we tried it once. And Stephanie, I don't know if you're planning to be the council liaison next year at the pool, but I think it's something, okay, I think it's something that, um.
Council.
Person, Pereira, should be here to discuss with you, cause if we have any past experience with it, she can discuss it. Because if we have any past experience with it, she can discuss it, I understand what you're saying, and it's great. But we even had a problem with the, uh, the car passes, you know, when we had to do everything with the police department, and you give your credit card, this and that. So before we do, and I don't know what the fee will be and what it will cost us to start that whole process, and if that will increase membership and payment, so. Maybe you should do. But I think you should hire whoever this is for the police department, cut out this stalling, because since January, all we we've done is stolen, we've not accomplished anything. We're all sitting in a building with mold.
I think about the journey.
We haven't moved, you haven't done anything, for God's sake, do something and let's move on.
Thank you very much, anybody else?
I agree.
Please come up, thank you, sorry about that.
When you think you hear, only then you hear. So we talking about the this building, I don't, you know, I wanna make clear, the this building is having, uh, fun since two thousand twenty-two, right? And we're going almost to two thousand twenty-four, so I want the VA to, you know, answer me, I don't know. What is the position of his doing, like, what is that he's doing to make sure that we don't go through this? Like, to prevent or to resolve this situation, because if I get a fine, I'm the owner of the house, like, no, no, I had to resort to that. Before, it's getting to this point that we are now, because this is kind of like embarrassing. So if I get a fine as the owner of the house, I will follow up, it was no follow up, and I'm gonna ask a few of the council members that is been seen last year. And I'm gonna say, I haven't met no meeting, and I, this is the first time, like, I haven't met no meeting. I'm being here maybe one or two, but I never heard this kind of topic about this one, this is the first time. And it seems like it's very serious, and I wanna ask, what is the job for the manager facility of, that we hired in January? The person that we hired, I was reading about the job description, it needs to maintain to do and make sure that everything is running good. And one, you guys, tell me what is this job doing, if you could respond to me, Mr. Loretto?
Um, you know what, you can find it in the audience, we'll, we'll, we'll send it over to you on your email.
What, what is it?
His responsibility is to oversee his manager, stay in the audience.
So, so.
But it's in the audience, he's asking what the responsibility is.
And and to to get to a point about the maintenance of the building, the items that they're talking about, fire inspection reports, they're not talking about the fire state measure. Or an outlet, those things have been taken care of, it's easy stuff. You want to ask a question, I'm answering here.
No, 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 because he said before, previously, that we haven't repaired the small.
And those are.
So that's been his thing that you could take care of, and you see not even.
No, that's not true, they have been done, the things that we.
No, he said that it's not, they don't.
Can you let me finish?
Yes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you.
Those are the items.
Not only story that is not true.
Those are not the items that are of concern, the items that are of concern are the items such as egress, fire suppression. And basement access, and that's it, those are items were addressed with the previous administration, as well as this administration, with the borough engineer. Who incorporated them into a plan at the riding costs, those aren't things that you can just do overnight and require major renovations to the building. The other stuff is ancillary stuff, and even the fire official who is here was basically saying that those items, as as far as adding an outlets and running. Configuring offices, we can do that, not a problem, they're not gonna hold our feet to the firemen, they're more concerned in the building life safety issues. That's what we're talking about here, where were they presented to? The previous administration and the current administration. Incorporated into the building renovations and improvements, so those are all addressed.
Mr. Park, have you heard about those, um, things in two thousand twenty-second, have you?
He was, he was in a meeting, we were in here, okay, we.
Uh, Ms. Park, like Ms. Jane, no, I wanna know, because I wanna know if we really get informed, the mayor, the council, or we could resort to that, because. When we come here, we have to hear all this thing that is kind of embarrassing for the VA, blame the previous administration. Yes, you are, you explained it, yes, you were, you was blaming the previous administration, did we resolve it? You say that, it's recorded.
Truth, that's the.
But you just say that right now.
I'm not blaming anyone.
Yes, you are.
I will understand, you understand.
Well, I think, like, what I said right now is, why we are not taking care of the little thing and just bring it here. And may like, we have to run out of this building, because of this, so the VA is not doing his job.
That's my job.
Well, you have to control this and try to resolve this.
You have your right to opinion, we we listen to you, hope you enjoy the work session.
Yeah, he's, he's there, he paid a lot of money to do his job, and he's not doing it, so do your job.
Anybody else, if you please?
Uh, Washington, I'm not getting love, first of all, Stephanie's, we worry about cameras that the policeman wear. That saves us a hell of a lot of money, because with the camera that the policeman wear, let's say you have an accident, you say, oh, the guy came over, he smacked me. The policeman can show on his camera that you're the antagonist, not the person that you're planning hit you. So the point is, it's a necessary thing for our police department, for them to count one by one, sometimes some get abused, some don't. It's not fair to hold the feet of the fire, of the police department, for the fire, cameras are very, very essential, especially nowadays. Because the lawsuits that come before towns, half of them are not even true.
We all, we all like cameras, go ahead.
Also, this thing with the charge cards, the what, the.
Charge, charge.
Uh, with the pool, the pool, they're short, you know how many cards bounced? And how many fraudulent checks they get also? The only way to guarantee that this is good is cash.
Wow, cash, monetary value, that is, that is sometimes, sometimes. Okay, great, thank you, anybody else? That's it, alright, good, may 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 I close the, uh, uh, public session?
Make a motion.
Grab a second, grab a, make a motion, close the work session, enjoy. Grab a second, all in favor?
Aye.